Today's meeting is being held in the Council Chamber, City Hall 260 High Street at 5:30 PM. Right now it's 5:35. The council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roco, please.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
She's out sick.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Okay. Right now, we're going to have a presentation, three-phase remediation plan, water public notification. We have Ted Gassman from Middlesex Water Company and Howard Madison, CDM Smith Project Manager.
I'll introduce Howard. Howard is your consultant for CDM Smith.
You can.
I'll introduce Howard. He's your consultant for CDM Smith in regard to the Runyon Water Treatment Plan.
Thanks, Ed. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Council. I'm going to talk to you about the three-phase plan that we developed with the business administrator and other members of the staff to address the notice of nonconformance that all the residents were advised of with regard to the gross alpha. Phase one applies to immediate actions that we're trying to take on behalf of the city. Phase two would be intermediate compliance solutions that are going to take place over the next year or so. And then the long-term water treatment plan improvements, which are what we talked about a couple of years ago when we came to the council and saw it funded. Can I go to the next slide, please? This is with regard to immediate actions. The scope related to this is purchasing water from Middlesex Water. There is an interconnect that exists out at the treatment plant. And what we're trying to do is get approval through the state to allow us to use some of this water to feed into the water that's fed to the city from the treatment plant. And this is important because the water that would come from this interconnect would have very low, if not nonexistent, radiological content. And so it would help bring the plant down into compliance. We do need to get some approvals from the state with regard to this, which we're going to pursue concurrently with designing the improvements. The purpose, obviously, is to bring the radiological content of the water that's fed to the city down. The timeline for this, we can't do it immediately. The interconnection is not there. It needs to be constructed. But at the same time, we also want to be talking to the state to get approval for this. And it would be something that we would use over the next, probably, twelve months in different amounts to kind of bridge the gap until we get to the phase two improvements, which I'll talk about next. There is a cost for this. In order to purchase the water from Middlesex Water, we're estimating that it would be about $200,000 maximum, probably less, but it will depend a little bit on the demand and what the plant has going on at the time. Next slide. Phase two, the intermediate compliance solution. So fortunately, we just completed the pilot study with regard to the water treatment plant improvements. We piloted what's called a Z-88 media from Water Remediation Technologies. It was successful in removing the radiological material. So we want to expedite and advance the construction of that component of the treatment plant. The purpose, obviously, here would, instead of purchasing water, you would be producing your own compliant water. There are just a couple of wells that we need to treat so we can segregate them and dedicate the treatment to them for this kind of advanced treatment. But what we would be doing is setting the stage for adding on the full treatment in the future if the city chose to proceed with that. But this would bring you into compliance, and then you would be treating the water on your own. The timeline for this is longer, nine to 15 months. And this is based on coordinating with the DEP, getting approval for the engineering part of it, but also bringing the compliance group into the fold so that they understand what's going on and they're approving it as well. The estimated cost for this is $16 million, which would fall under the approval that you've already given for the overall plan. The outcome here would be near-term compliance over this 15-month period. And we're actually beginning to work sooner than we had originally anticipated, at least with regard to the radiological component. The phase three improvements, these are related to the full scope of work that we talked about in the past. And here, we're looking at a number of different treatments to address a number of challenges that we have out at the treatment plant. And these are really federal and state water quality requirements. The timeline here for this is, based on the current pace of design, we're anticipating a groundbreaking sometime in 2028, March probably, with a completion in 2030. It's a significant amount of work, and it's going to take dedication on part of the staff, but also the city. Current status, we're in the design. We're in the 30% design phase. We just started that right now after we finished the pilot. And we're going to be moving, I think we're going to be completed with design in the end of 2026. Estimated cost is currently $93 million. This is higher than we had originally anticipated. I would emphasize, it's a very early phase estimate. I'm not looking to be low at this point. So we're going to be trying to refine this number going forward. And this doesn't include any principal forgiveness, and obviously, that would reduce the cost to the tax payers. We are coordinating with, oops, sorry. Lost my voice. That is a quick summary of the three phases, and I'm open for questions.
Anybody has any questions?
No.
I would like you to hang out until the end because I know we have residents in here, and probably they will have questions that I would like you to address, if it's possible.
I have a question.
Yes.
I mean, I think that, I mean, I'm sure you'll hear it tonight at some point from some of the people that are here. I think, oh, can you hear me? All right, very good. That, I think one of the biggest concerns is, is that, I mean, I see everything up there. I got the letter too in my email, so I saw everything. I think their biggest concern is when there will be at least the beginning to where the water would be somewhat usable for them.
Right.
I mean, I saw what it said, so, you know, by the time we hook up with Middlesex Water, so we're looking at about a month?
It's probably going to be a little bit more than that.
Okay. I mean, that's, I'm sure you'll get other questions, but I think that's the direction that the questions are going to go. Okay, I'm good.
Understood. I mean, Ed, you want to, I mean, I know that the plant has already taken.
Is there a way, I mean, do we have to do actual tie-in?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Where would that, but where would that be?
On the plant, on the plant property.
Okay, but where, Middlesex Water is coming from where? That question I really.
They have the transmission.
I'm sorry. Can you get to the mic at some?
They have the transmission line that's very close and runs.
Oh, and then you're just going to run their hookup to, oh, okay. All right, that's where I wanted to really kind of know, where their line was.
Correct.
Okay.
This was thought of years and years ago when they put the physical pipes next to each other. We just have to do the final connections to tie it in.
Oh, okay, all right.
And we have to have the DEP approve this, so we are having the two different water sources.
Okay, all right.
And so how long would that take, approximately?
Little bit more than a month, maybe up to two months. You know, it's also dependent on the DEP approval, which we don't have control over. You know, we also have to procure the equipment, which should, most of this stuff is just off the shelf, so it's not like it's a specialty stuff. The Z-88, that's a specialty stuff. That needs to be, you know, vetted, and it needs lead, significant lead times on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance, public hearing, three minutes maximum per speaker per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the City of Perth Amboy Development Regulation and Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 430, with respect to term definitions. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Person, Ordinance Number 380-85, and Amendments Adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about addition and deletion. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of three minutes. Minutes, council meetings, February 26, 2025, March 10, 2025, March 26, 2025, April 16, 2025, April 30, 2025. Bits, bits were received on September 16, 2025, for the following, Perth Amboy Home Improvement Program for 390 Ashley Street. We received Baron Home Improvement for $12,600. GGNW Construction, $13,534 with 60 cents. A+ Construction, $17,200. NJMF Investment, $17,305. Pretty Clean Construction, $20,950. Property Improvement of NB, $22,700. Bits were received also on September 16, 2025, for the following, Perth Amboy Home Improvement Program, 601 Pacific Avenue. A+ Construction, $20,400. Baron Home Improvement, $23,450. Severe Structures, $23,800. Property Improvement of NB, $25,000. NJMF Improvement, $33,403.
Council President, I just have a quick question about this. Can someone elaborate as to why the A+ Construction was chosen as recommended as opposed to the other two, the BOMRA and the GND? Why was the A+ Construction chosen as opposed to the two lower?
Because usually, they select the lowest.
Yeah, but that's why I want to know why they didn't choose that one. What's the reason why?
I think the big letter did explain it, didn't it?
Okay, I think it's something that was not.
Yeah, there it is. Here, number two. That was the first one she's questioning. Did she say anything? Maybe you would continue, and he can get you the answer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, before the voting time.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Person, Ordinance Number 380-85, and Amendments Adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about addition and deletion. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, Wreckers, Ordinance Number 621-92, adopted August 4, 1992, as amended by Ordinance Number 2152-2024, adopted March 27, 2024, also known as Chapter 425 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy entitled, Ordinance Fixing and Establishing a Schedule of Salaries and Salary Ranges and Increments for Officers and Employees of the City of Perth Amboy, Ordinance Number 218-79, as amended, adopted July 3, 1979. This is FOP Lodge Number 80, January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2028. Resolution, R41025, authorizing a refund of utility overpayment in the amount of $6,034 with 86 cents to Eladio and Lydia Ruiz on 418 Brace Avenue. R401, 1025, authorizing refund of water sewer subsequent overpayment in the amount of $3,374 with 52 to Cordalitty on Block 371, Lot 6 dot 02. R402, 1025, authorizing refund of utility overpayment in the amount of $1,625 with 45 cents to Ismelda Peña on 275 Front Street. R403, 1025, authorizing refund of utility payment in the amount of $8,435 with 96 cents to Robert Arminante Esquire Trust account. R404, 1025, authorizing refund of utility overpayment in the amount of $1,657 with 98 cents to Jonathan and Aaron Junis on 151 High Street. R405, 1025, rectifying the memorandum of agreement between the City of Perth Amboy and the Perth Amboy Superior Officers Association Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 80, and approving a collective negotiation agreement for the period of January 1, 2025, to December 31, 2028. R406, 1025, authorizing a refund in the amount of $50 to Stephanie Cruz for 48 State Street for the cost of the permit fee for the use of Duffy Park. R407, 1025, rejecting rebids for the city's roll gate removal program. R408, 1025, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled, Davy Davis Salazar versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2024-687, in the total amount of $102,600. R409, 1025, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled, Darling Sidiaco versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2022-2188, for the amount of $44,154, less a credit of $33,300, for a final amount of $10,854. R410, 1025, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled, Julius Madden versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2024-3985, and the total amount of $10,000. R411, 1025, awarding a bid to A+ Construction, Inc., for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed $17,200 for 390 Ashley Street. R412, 1025, awarding a bid to A+ Construction, Inc., for contracting services related to the home improvement program in an amount not to exceed $20,400 for 601 Pacific Avenue. R413, 1025, authorizing change order number one to the contract with Senko Metals LLC for the Rosen Garden Park Improvement in an amount not to exceed $14,179. R414, 1025, authorizing a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with County of Middlesex for the use of specialized equipment. R415, 1025, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the 2026 recreation opportunities for individuals with disability grant in the amount of $20,000. R416, 1025, authorizing change order number one to the contract with McCully Construction Company, Inc., for building addition and renovation veterans memorial youth league field house at Willow Pond in the amount not to exceed $2,066. R417, 1025, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy to participate in the National Opioid Settlement Agreement with, I'll try my best here, Avogin, Amneal, Opotex, Igman, Indivior, Millen, Sun, and Cytus. R418, 1025, authorizing change order number two to the contract with Torco Golf, Inc., for the veterans memorial youth league complex improvements in the amount not to exceed $193,733 with 17 cents. R419, 1025, allocating funds for the contract with Suburban Consulting Engineers for the veterans memorial youth league field renovation in the amount of $34,984 with 60 cents. We have some communications. Closed session. Resolution, R399, 1025, authorizing a closed session at the October 8, 2025, council meetings to discuss the following. Number one, workers' compensation litigation, Davis Salazar versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2024-687, Darling Sidiaco versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2022-2188, and Julius Madden versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2024-3985.
Clear. One for attorney-client privileged contract.
Crime privilege contract, also adding it to the closed session. I need a motion. Move it.
Second. Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, public portion, three minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Okay, it's open to the public for any, any concern.
Good evening, members of the council. These are actually questions, with your permission, Madam President, that I really wanted to address the Middlesex Water. That's okay.
So stay your question, and then they will.
Fair enough. Thank you. Since I have the last three minutes, I actually have.
Well, after you have your question, then they can just come up.
I actually have five very short questions. Number one, is Perth Amboy's water currently drinkable? And is that question, that question's also specifically, is it drinkable without restriction at this time?
Okay.
Number.
You can address it to us, and they will hear it. Go ahead, go ahead.
Number two, gross alpha particles, I understand the reading is 66.6 pico curies per liter. I wanted to get clear, is that from one reading? The letter that we received, the homeowners received later on makes an indication that there's an annual average where it's 16.6. That suggests that there are multiple readings that are above the 15.0. That concerns me. So I'm just looking for a clarification on that point. Number three, the information the gentleman just provided us is that it's going to cost about $106 million to remediate and address our long-term issues concerning our drinkable water. Who's paying for that? The City of Perth Amboy or Middlesex Water? Number four, there's a 1-800 number listed on the letter that was distributed. I've called that number three times, and I get the same answer each time. The Water Department is closed. Leave a message when you can, or call back another day. Number five, I'd like to find out what's going on with that. Number five, separate from drinking, what about absorption through the skin if you're bathing in the water? What about if you're brushing your teeth with the water? What about if you're using the water to cook? Those are questions that I'm very, very concerned about, as all Perth Amboy is. And I don't want to make it sound like it's a crisis, because maybe it's not. You know, I know we're all exposed periodically to certain levels of radiation when we're using our cell phone, there's a little bit of radiation, when you're using the microwave oven. So maybe it's nothing. But we haven't heard anything from anybody, and I'm hoping that today, we're going to get some answers. I think Perth Amboy deserves that, as do you, members of the council as well. Thank you.
And that's why they're here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Can you respond to his questions and concern?
So the first question is, is the water safe to drink? Yes, it is. A second question was.
60.6.
Oh, the, so, the DEP has a quarterly average that we have to submit to them. In the quarterly average, yes, there were readings that were over the 15, bringing the average above the 15. This site has had radiological issues, and it has steadily increased. That's why we brought it to the floor, and we're trying to address this.
60 was the average, I knew it was going to be higher, right?
Yes. But the quarterly average is now over the 15, which is the maximum allowable limit. Can you bathe with it? Yes, you can. Can you brush your teeth with it? Yes, you can. As far as payment, is the city allocated the money for the construction? They will be sheltering the responsibility for the upgrades.
What else? Number five, is the 1-800 number?
Oh, I will look into that. Thank you for your feedback on that. I know that we've had issues on the first couple of days that we had it set up, but we addressed that, and I will follow up with it.
I appreciate that. I've called twice this week alone, saying, very polite voice, saying they're closed.
I will find out what this issue is with that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Vince, Vince, that lady.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay, yes. Stay your name and your address.
Okay. And I'm not a public speaker, so I wrote it out. Let me see if I can put it down here. I'm Catherine Hunt, and I'm a resident of, whoops.
Get close to the mic because.
There you go. Okay, I'm Catherine Hunt. I'm a resident of Monroe Township, and I've lived in Monroe for about 16 years. I'm here tonight to respectfully urge this council to pass a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, which is currently before the state legislature. It is S3672A4987. This piece of legislation codifies and expands the state directive that we currently have in place, which limits local law enforcement from. which limits local law enforcement from collaborating with federal immigration authorities beyond what is required by law. The Essex County Board of Commissioners, as well as the Hudson County Board of Commissioners, and at least nineteen towns in both blue and red counties have issued such resolutions, including Atlantic City, Bloomfield, Chatham, Edison, Flemington, Kearney, Leonia, Maplewood, Madison, Morristown, Patterson, Plainfield, Princeton, South Orange, Trenton, Montgomery, Newark, and Jersey City. This legislation is not about politics, it's about people. It ensures that law enforcement does not act as federal immigration agents and that our local resources are used to protect public safety, not tear families apart. There are stories of the immigrant mother who drew a map on the back of her child's hand so that he could find his way home in case they were separated. Of a sixteen-year-old girl who couldn't register for school because both of her parents were in detention centers and seventeen-year-old teenage boy who has to figure out how to make a life here without his parents, both of whom were deported. We all want a safe town, but when undocumented immigrants are afraid to report crimes, cooperate with police, or seek medical help because of potential detention, arrest, or deportation, everyone is less safe. The Immigrant Trust Act restores that trust. It builds a firewall between immigration enforcement and local law enforcement so that people regardless of status can come forward when something is wrong. Just to be clear, this act doesn't prevent our police officers from doing their jobs. On the contrary, it allows them to do their jobs that they were trained for. It simply ensures that they're not deputized by ICE, which would otherwise strain our resources.
Thank you.
And I see the time's up, so thank you for your time and I urge you to please pass a resolution in favor. I'll make sure your clerk has the model resolution for you and any additional information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Vince Maculon, two fifteen Sheridan Street, Perth Amboy. Two questions for the Middlesex Water Treatment Executives. I have the response that the Water Department made on October first when questioned by reporters to how this happened was they don't know. Could you give us any further information? There are several industrial facilities in the area of the watershed, the Runyon watershed. There have been numerous meetings, decades worth of financial as well as legal things have done within the City of Perth Amboy and New Jersey. So I'd like to have an answer to that. Second, do you foresee, what do you foresee in terms of an application? Have you filled the application out with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection? Because the violations go back to July. I would think that this is more, although you say in the notice this is not an emergency, Perth Amboy has been under these types of stresses for many years. I'd like to tell you, residents and landlords have to pay water bills within the City of Perth Amboy. So they have a right to an acceptable water, potable water that they can feel safe in. Obviously, today's news, Middlesex Water, three million paying customers are being given through a lawsuit some monies because Middlesex Water did not solve a problem in the Woodbridge area, Plainfield, out of the Plainfield area. Is there anything you can do to help us pass residents or landlords having to take this upon themselves and go into court and push this further? You say Perth Amboy is going to rebuild the treatment, but we need to be reassured that there's going to be potable water for the future, not putting this thing off for a year or two years or whatever. So answer my question, have you filed a, a application with New Jersey Department of Community of environmental protection?
You have to kind of address the council and they will answer you.
Yes. But what do you foresee, last question? What do you foresee, foresee as the potential problems in that application? In terms of going through that? Do you have to create new wills?
Thank you.
You said, you say the pipeline is down in Runyon. Are we still going to get Runyon waters from this?
Thank you.
Come on, we need to talk very loud about this.
Okay. Do you have an answer for that, for him?
Fifty years. The adult Amboy design.
Just to clarify, the issue that you're having right now is the source of, it's geologic radiation. So this is naturally occurring radioactive material. It comes from the ground, which is where the water comes from. Yes, we have been in touch with the D E P, but we have not filled out the actual form yet because we have to get their approval. Okay, so we need to get the, we're coordinating with the D E P very intimately. We're gearing up to coordinate with the engineering and the compliance people. Once everyone's in agreement, then we can organize the submittal and it will be. The goal is for it to get approved by both of those entities before we submit it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Orlando Perez, Perth Amboy. Yes, I'm your boogeyman. First of all, let's clear the air here. Perth Amboy always had water problems for many years. Water and sewage problem. Why? Because they never upgraded. Known fact. It always had low water pressure back in the eighties, sixty, seventy, and so on. Same thing with the sewage back in the early seventies. Listen to this carefully. Pay attention. Back in the early seventies, Perth Amboy got money to fix the sewer. Guess what? Where did the money go? Put that one in your notebook, okay? This town has never upgraded its system. Same thing with the cable. Your cable's a D T, that should have been upgraded. Many, that was put in back in the seventies. This town is so far behind in infrastructure, some things, that the Flintstones are way over us. For many years, council member after council member, administration, administration, they looked the other way. They didn't bother, okay? They knew they had a water problem, they knew they had this, and nobody said nothing, okay? It's not your fault, okay? It's not the other, it's how the system works. All the cities are having the same problem too, just not here. It's lack of whatever. You have a problem in this town. Not, you didn't hurt it, maybe you did, but you got a problem here. And I said it before, it's going to catch up to you. It's going to, money goes big time. Things are changing. This town has better snap out of it. Wake up real quick. Believe me. Oh, another thing to worry here, there's Channel thirty-four. I don't know what's going on. You know, maybe you got a problem with Channel thirty-four. I don't know, maybe you're afraid of whatever. Don't be afraid, you're council members, okay? You got a problem, just address it. Guess what, folks? We got a problem here. Don't be afraid. You know, kind of like I said, man up, because you know why? You don't want to bring a lighter match to a gas leak when you have a problem. Remember that. You don't want to bring a lighter match to a gas leak when you have a problem. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, may I say a comment? I'm sorry, what? Okay, just for the record, this council was the one that addressed the problem with the water that had been, been ignored for so many years and, and we were the one who approved the plan that we have in place to, to take care of that. Anybody else? Well, yeah, I'm glad that you did mention that the, you know, the can has been kicked down, down the road for so many years and now us up here has a very big task of making a very difficult decision. So we are trying to make the best decision that we can for the entire city and we're trying to make, you know, we're trying to make it work, we're trying to fix it. And unfortunately, it's, it may or may not hurt us, but we have to make the decisions and fix it. We can't ignore it anymore because we don't want it to get even worse. And that's what we're trying to focus on. Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else? No, he said later, right? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sage Nieves, two seventy King Street. So does the city, I've heard about the monies that were being put into this. So does the city have the money set aside or is this falling on the taxpayers? Where, where is, where is this money coming from?
Finish your question, then we'll give you the answer.
And just, just off the top of my head, so this type of occurrence, if I'm not mistaken, would be a tier-two violation. So EPA and NJDEP rules generally require public notification within thirty days of the samples. Those samples were taken in mid-July, so notice should have been sent out in August, not October now. So that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'll ask Mr. Madison or Ted to speak to that, but I will just want to address and let you, make you aware of in terms of who's paying for this. Taxpayers don't pay for this. This comes from the water rates, as you are aware. Not everybody pays taxes, but everybody pays water. Everybody who's a resident, business owner, everybody, it comes from the water rates, which were increasing, I think, two years ago. So that's what's going to pay for this. Money's already been approved, which was discussed earlier. So it's just the process of going through this process. But we have a viable plan in place to remediate this situation, short term and long term.
As far as the reporting time, it was the twelve-month quarterly averages. So yes, there was, it went exceeded.
You have to address that.
It exceeded in June, but the fourth quarter, the fourth quarter average was what pushed us over into the sixteen.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Tony Faber. I'm from eleven eighty Raritan Road in Scotch Plains. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm also going to urge you to adopt a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, which Catherine spoke about earlier. I'd just like to add a couple of things. I think we mostly know around here that what's happening in terms of ICE activity across the country and in our area is not the normal process of removing criminals from our neighborhood, but an attempt at mass deportation and terrorizing the local populations. Edison passed a similar resolution because thirty-one people, I believe it was, that were removed at one time from a warehouse in Edison. And such things can only drive people underground in the community. And with the potential election of a Republican governor who has promised that local police will be working with ICE if he is elected governor, we need the Immigrant Trust Act to prevent things from getting even worse in that regards. If local police are actively the ones rounding up people and asking people for their papers, as is happening with ICE right now, no one is going to want to interact with local police, not undocumented immigrants or their friends or relatives. It's going to make your community much less safe. And these resolutions are not just symbolic. These, there's thirty-two assembly members that support this legislation and the heads of the Senate and Assembly are waiting to see what kind of support communities have for it, probably voting on this after the election. So each town that votes for it really sends a message that, about what kind of community they want to be and, and the safety of their communities. So we'll email you documents regarding this, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How you guys doing? All right, I'm here for the same thing that I've been here for my third time. Phyllis Castillo, five forty Colgate. All right, I'm complaining about the, the car racing, the loud music, and I wanted more police presence in our neighborhood with this Brace Avenue, Lee Avenue, New Brunswick Avenue, Florida Grove, and Colgate Avenue. Those are the streets that they're using at nighttime to race with the loud mufflers. And I have another issue. My house is adjacent to Washington Park, where right now the marijuana smell is coming to my house, to my windows. Okay, I have kids, I got, I got tenants upstairs complaining about it. And I remember when I first moved over here, this park used to have a gate. They used to close off the parking lot. I'm trying to see if we can get that back on again, because this is getting out of control. They're there until three o'clock in the morning smoking marijuana. I can't even open my windows at nighttime because of the marijuana smell. I got everything on videos, I got recordings. I mean, I have everything, every time I keep coming here. This is my third time. I'm here for the citizens, from New Brunswick Avenue, the citizens at home. McDonald's, I don't know what they're doing about it, because that's their, their home base, where they're coming there, they hang out with the loud music, and that's when they take off and they start burning rubber around the neighborhood. So I'm trying to get in the contact with the owner from McDonald's, but apparently she's not returning my calls, which I'm going to take a further step on that, because right now I am so fed up with this that I'll be sixty-five in January and I can't, I invested too much, too much money in my home, Colgate Avenue. I spent seven hundred thousand dollars of my life savings on that house to live like this miserably. I can't do it no more. So I'm just asking the council, this is my third time here that I'm addressing this for the, even for the citizens that asked me for all the petitions I gave you the last time I gave you guys petitions. I'm going to take this further, which, I mean, if I have to get the media involved in this, I'm going to have to, because I, I can't deal with this no more. My wife, it drives me nuts, she's saying I'm going crazy. No, I spent seven hundred thousand dollars on my house. You think I want to live like this? No. They just had a street, a street takeover, burning tires on Smith Street, right next to the, the car wash this weekend. Who wants to live like this? I don't, I definitely don't. Anyway, please, I'm asking you, this is my third time here. I'm not going to stop from coming here, but trust me, I'm going to pull teeth, because this is not, nothing's being done. Why can't they have a police officer in our neighborhood? Why they got to be inside the township? This is every day, every night, every day, seven days a week. They're blasting music, racing cars. I don't see any one police officer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have a question. Council President, sorry. Is the chief of police here?
I was going to say the same.
I have a comment first, before the chief addresses this. You know, this gentleman has been here three times. And I actually have changed my walk at night to encompass the Washington Park area. So everything he is saying is on the money. So with that said, I think that we need to address this. And, you know, I know the chief is going to get up there and he's going to say his stuff, but I could feel the passion in his voice. I witnessed it with my own two eyes. And sir, I don't know if you realize that I'm a retired police officer.
My whole family is in New York.
All right, so all I'm trying to tell you is, is that I feel what you're saying. The only thing I have to tell you though, as far as, you can't smoke in the park. You cannot smoke in the park. As far as somebody walking down the street and smoking weed, there's nothing we can do about that because they made weed legal. But if they're smoking in the park, they're not allowed to.
In their parks.
And the other thing is, according to the ordinance, all parks close at dusk.
Not this one.
So.
Okay, sir, let him.
Let me, let me just finish. So at, at the end of the day, I find it very, very disheartening that we have to. So at, at the end of the day, I find it very, very disheartening that we have to have a citizen come here three times and talk about the same thing that I've witnessed myself now. So, you know, at the end of the day, this needs to be addressed. I don't know if it'll take a camera being put in the park. I mean, we do have mobile cameras, I know they can be moved, but my suggestion right now is that one of those cameras belong in the middle of that park. Until this is resolved, until, you know, he has every right to lead a peaceful life, like everybody else. So, you know, I hope this gets resolved by the next time you come and see us. I hope you come here, sir, I hope you're here every time.
But I think we're going to let the Chief of Police to determine what the plan is going to be, please.
And why hasn't it been addressed since he's been here three times already?
Good evening, Council. When you say the word "not addressed," we respond to calls that we receive there, the officers are in the area and they are monitoring the area. Councilman, when you witnessed this, you called the police, they responded, and what occurred?
No, I didn't call the police.
You didn't call, okay. All right. So again, the officers are there when they get called, they respond to the area. We know that we've had issues with the softball and the games and so forth that were there. We worked with the Recreation Department, and I don't believe since the last three times that we've been here that there haven't been any games. Those games were postponed, those games were moved. So that was a big portion of the problem that we were having there was the drinking and so forth that was occurring at the time in the area. As we went over, you know, we can't, of course, just go and open up coolers, we can't search people for what they may have in their coolers, those kinds of things, and we address what's able to be out there and what's seen there.
So it is not until someone is called or until the police is called that a police officer arrives?
No, not at all.
Or is someone there?
We have someone assigned to all areas of the city, and especially when things are happening in the parks. Again, when the games are there and so forth, on the weekends and so forth, we have our special officers that are assigned to that area to check that park, as well as multiple other parks throughout the city. But it is on a regular patrol schedule, it is there, but of course, if they are, if we are called, we do respond, absolutely.
May I interrupt you a minute? Can you tell us the next time you're here, how many summonses have been issued in the park? And how many summonses have been issued on New Brunswick Avenue in that area? Because you know what? This gentleman is a citizen. We answer to the citizens.
Absolutely.
And at the end of the day, you know what, Chief? You know I call you on the phone. So you know what? If I see somebody smoking weed and they're walking down the street, I mean, I'll call you every single time then if you want me to do that.
Well, again, we can't do anything with that.
But my point, my point I'm making is, is that this, this is a problem. And he already said that he's called the police and they don't respond.
Then I need to know the times and dates and so forth that there was no response before we do that.
But I also feel that what he's talking about mainly is the speeding and the things that goes on later on in the evening. I mean, is there something-
4:00 in the morning, I'm sorry. 4:00 in the morning, last night.
So I think that's the, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot to come up with some solution for it, but I just want you to be aware of what he has been reporting and maybe we can find something to alleviate that area.
I would like to hear some kind of plan of how this is going to be addressed and enforced, I mean strictly enforced. I mean, you know, he's, he's been complaining for how many times now?
Three times.
Three times.
Right. And there's been three fatal accidents on New Brunswick Avenue in the last three years in, from McDonald's up to 721 New Brunswick Avenue. So obviously, there's an issue there. And, you know, I mean, really, I feel for him. I mean, I don't like it when I hear the loud music and, you know, cars going by my house, but, you know, at the end of the day, he has every right to lead a peaceful life. And you know what? The parks close at dusk. There shouldn't be anybody in a park at dusk, after dusk, unless they're walking their dog and they're walking through the park. But as far as people partying in the park, there shouldn't be any of that.
Well, there are games in the evening, that's, there's lights there in the field. So there's games in the evening that they would have to be there in the park and so forth, but those other activities are talking about.
Right, well, that's different if there's a game, Chief, I understand that. There's no, I, that, they belong there, they're playing, but if they're playing the music and beating the drums, that's a different thing.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, as far as addressing, we did address the games. That was the biggest, the last two times we're here, that was everything, every single time was mostly the issues with the drinking and the disrobing and maybe urinating in public, those kinds of things, and that has been completely removed. Now, as far as the speeding and those types of things, we have devices we could put in place to assess what actually is happening, at what times and so forth, and we can have the individual officers and have them on a specific time there when that's occurring to be able to do that and then see when, if that's, you know, on a regular basis when it's there, we can address it that way.
And is it possible to move one of the cameras, as the council member has stated earlier, to that area?
We can put that on one of the lists that we have for people that are interested in having those in certain areas and so forth, based on the needs of what's going on, sure.
And as he's, and as the gentleman stated, that more police presence, like he doesn't see any around there, so, you know.
Well, if you, I'll have shortly the, some KPIs that I'm giving over to the, to the Business Administrator with specificities as far as amount of summonses issued on all of those things that we're, that we're speaking of and so forth. They're not broken down by what's on New Brunswick Avenue between here and there, but the, the involvement of what the officers are doing out there and everything else. And I'll reiterate again that we are within, you know, on top five of summonses issued in, in the tri-county area, in the central Jersey, for our small size. So we're certainly out there doing the work.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a few questions about the water. You said it's safe to drink at this level, but for how long? I mean, radiation does build-
Oh, I'm sorry. Say your name and address.
Catherine, that was 180 Market Street.
We know you, but-
So how long at this level of radiation is it good? And what level is it safe for that, that number where it's deemed unsafe and for how long? Also, I have another question about the water. This is radium in the water. They don't know how this got here. How did this water get in the water? Get the radium, get in the water? And the other question I had, hang on one second. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it, yeah, that's it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to the first question, I don't know the answer to that, so I would defer to Ted, and I think he's probably going to provide the information to the council when he obtains it. With regard to the question about how did the water, or how did the, the issue that we're talking about is gross alpha. In fact, it didn't have a violation with regard to radium, I don't think. And it got in the water because of the geology of the aquifer, where the water is withdrawn from the source of the treatment plant.
I'm not sure of that answer as far as the radiation. I know it's safe to drink. I will provide the council with a response on that or her questions to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Adel Toffick, 341 Colfax Street. So I've been coming here for years, time after time after time. I would like to see the council format a way for the city to be a lot more business-friendly, especially with the businesses who, employees, city residents, who own businesses in Perthamboy, who pay taxes in Perthamboy, sewer, water, utilities, and have families from Perthamboy to support. I would also like to have meetings that are constructive and not being dictatorship. Not, not everything is one way. We got to find a happy medium for everyone to be comfortable with. So I would like all the business owners to have input on things and negotiate certain things. And when I say negotiate, doesn't mean necessarily financially, it means by a form of accepting things. And it cannot be double standards because every time I look at the agenda, it's money paid out, money paid out, money paid out, millions of dollars, including salary increases, which are going up in January by 2.5%. So somebody can't stay here and have double standards, say, hey, we can't do this because there's no money, when you yourself, again, 2.5% increase. So I would like to kind of do away with the double standards as you guys, all on the board, all the council members, all the governing body have been very transparent when it comes down to government. So I would like to see some kind of format put in place.
It's not-
And like a happy medium, because it can't be all one way, it can't be dictatorship. We also have family, we have bills, we live here, we vote here, we pay taxes, water, sewer. We suffer just the same as everyone else. So I think we should come up with a better master plan. We've come in here for years and asking for things, some of it have occurred. We just got to tweak the things that haven't. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay.
Great, should I go up and try again?
Okay, all right. I need a motion to go to closed session. After the closed session, we'll come back and have the formal meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay, we're going to closed session, we'll be back.
Could be you.
I need a motion to return from closed session.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay. So now is the City Council meeting. Good evening. This is the council meeting for October 8, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chambers, City Hall, 260 High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Right now is 7:45. Council President Tejeda, Secretary of the Governing Body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista, she is absent due to illness.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Okay, let's stand for the invocation. Oh Lord, please guide this governing body to make the right decisions for our residents, for our city, for our visitors, and for our, all who lives and play in this city, in this beautiful city of Perthamboy. I also want to pray for the officers that are, for the troops that are abroad and those that are in, in our nation defending our freedom. Please protect them, protect their families, and, and everyone in this nation. I also want to pray for our students, that every, every day to be safe in their environment, wherever they're at, especially in their school. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the best world. Okay, we, earlier in the caucus, we had the presentation from the Water Department. Okay, so we move on to the ordinance, public hearing, three minutes maximum per speaker per ordinance. Ordinance number one, ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the City of Perthamboy Development Regulation and Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 430, with respect to term definitions. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay, it's open to the public. Anyone wants to speak on that? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordnance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, Ordinance Number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about addition and deletion. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda, which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of three minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay, it's open to the public on agenda item only. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comment.
Move.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay, minutes. Council meetings, February 26, 2025, March 10, 2025, March 26, 2025, April 16, 2025, April 30, 2025. I need a motion-
Move.
Second.
To approve.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Bits, bits were received on September 16, 2025 for the following. Perthamboy Home Improvement Program, 390 Ashley Street. Barra Home Improvement, $12,600. GGNW Construction, $13,534 with 60 cents. A+ Construction, $17,200. NJMF Investments, $17,305. Pretty Clean Construction, $20,950. Property Improvement of NB, $22,700. Bits were also received on September 16, 2025 for the following. Perthamboy Home Improvement Program, 601 Pacific Avenue. A+ Construction, $20,400. Barra Home Improvement, $23,450. Severe Structures, $23,800. Property Improvement of NB, $25,000. NJMF Improvement, $33,403. Ordinance, first reading, non-public discussion, number one, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordnance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Person, Ordinance Number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. This is about addition and deletion. I need a motion.
Move.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Records. Ordinance Number 621-92, adopted August 4, 1992, as amended by Ordinance Number 2152-2024, adopted March 27, 2024, also known as Chapter 425 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. And I think we want to make an amendment to, to remove checks from, from the way of paying, so just to put it on the record. I need a motion.
Move.
I need a second.
Second. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Morales?
No.
Councilwoman Peralta? I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, so the no?
This is, uh, it's removing checks from the option of payments. Uh, but the other ones are there, the...
The other forms of payment?
Yes. All the other ones.
No. Councilman Puccio?
No.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy entitled Ordinance Fixing and Establishing A Schedule Of Salaries And Salary Ranges And Increments For Officers And Employees Of The City Of Perth Amboy, ordinance number two eighteen dash seventy-nine, as amended, adopted July third nineteen seventy-nine. And this is for FOP Lodge number eighty, from January first, twenty twenty-five, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, look over the resolution and let me know if you need to pull anything. Are you okay?
I'm good.
How about you?
I'm good.
Okay? Okay, so the consent agenda, I need a motion for the consent agenda, which is
Move.
R four hun- hold on, R four hundred ten twenty-five through R not four nineteen, ten twenty-five, thus the consent agenda, I need a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Ladies.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, on September twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, the council conducted a hearing pursuant to the, to Chapter four twenty-five dash seventeen of the city code related to an appeal filed by uh AT Towing of a suspension of the company's towing privileges on behalf of the city. The council heard testimony of Lieutenant Medina from the PAPD, and Adele Toffet of AT Towing, and reviewed documents and records submitted by both. The council is required to render a decision on the appeal. A yes vote will grant AT Towing's appeal, a no vote will deny the appeal, and uphold the suspension. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Morales?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
No.
Okay, so we have communication, um, then, uh, public portion, three minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public on any matter.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Okay, it's open to the public for any matter, not just the agenda.
Vince McHale, two fifteen Sheridan Street, Thorndyke Caucus meeting, you had several people uh asking you sincerely to approve a resolution for this Immigrants Trust Act. It's yet to have a hearing within the body in Trenton. It's very important that people within our community can access services, no matter where you go, and understand that's why you're going for those services, to be respectfully given some care and activity. We don't live in a country where tyranny should be allowed. It is a complete lie when somebody in the United States of America shows up anywhere for a court hearing and is taken out simply on the basis of their immigration status, when they truthfully appeared there to get justice. I hope that the city can see that we don't live in a land of tyranny. There is one individual, Donald Trump, who thinks he has all power to do all things within our country. He does not. Please join together and have, and prove a resolution that the New Jersey Assembly can approve this. Please, Assemblyman Copeland, Levon Lopez, do what you need for for this community in Perth Amboy. Thank you, please enjoy the weather and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Martha Carden. My name is Martha Carden, I live at one zero eight Rector Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. I'm concerned about the people driving down Rector Street speeding. I would like to know if they can look into a speed bump? It's really bad.
For the entire city.
Huh?
It's problem in the entire city.
Yes, but since I live there, I mean, people don't come, but I decided to come and speak about it. We have walls, we have kids.
You called the police department?
I haven't called anybody yet.
Oh, okay.
But I see it from the window, people just zooming through. And the other day, we had, we was on the side of the road, by the car, and the guy just drove, he was speeding down the, down the street. To see if they can do something about it.
Okay, so the police department is aware of what's going on, and they're taking notes to see where areas are...
So what should I do, I see it again?
Okay, you can call the police?
Okay.
And put a complaint.
Alright, you know. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, really quick, just so you know, in regards to a speed bump, that's not just something that could, the city can just elect to just do. Like, there has to be a, a traffic study done to determine whether it warrants it, like, and that's a process. So I just want to make you aware, in terms of a speed bump, but the chief can uh look into it if you're, if you're lodging complaints about speeding. And send officers there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
If I may, Council President, just this past week, we did have an incident of a motor vehicle accident on Rector Street that involved a drunk driver, which we took into custody and charged appropriately for uh driving that around. I'm not sure that's what you're speaking of, of course, but just to let you know, we are out there, and we are in fact taking positive measures to address the issues that that are occurring in those, in that area and in other areas.
Yeah, and also if the resident call, it will be good because that way you'll be aware of it.
Yes, they were actually there checking on a loud music complaint and so forth in the area when the uh, the accident did occur, and they were able to get the individual in custody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, Adele Toffet, three forty-one Coopex Street. So we got into the uh, the ordinance that was in place. For clarification purposes, what forms of payments moving forward is being accepted? And is it gonna be optional, like it was voted on in the past? So that way, there's no miscommunication. As far as the and or, it was supposed to have been inserted, it was voted on quite some time ago. So I think it's for everyone's best benefit for it to be as such, and it should be uh inserted into ordinance because it was voted on already, and it's been quite some time. Just wanted to see if you guys came up to a conclusion, and if it is gonna be done, when will it be done? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I mean, um, this was something that was requested for the administration, for the ordinance to be amended. So we still have one more reading, or we don't...
It failed.
It failed. So we, we don't have it, so whatever changes you decide um that you need on that particular ordinance, thus should come up later on.
Can I say something? So, um, I know that the contracts are coming up, the renewal. Um, I think, in my opinion, it's almost up, we should just leave it as is. I know we have voted on it and all that stuff, it failed. Um, but just for no confusion, we should just follow as is right now, and then the changes we can make when the new one comes.
Do you agree? So the, so the ordinance is one thing, and the contract is another.
Oh, but, well, I'm just saying that whatever changes are coming...
I think the problem was that the contract said about the options of payment, but the ordinance did not address the options.
So I think it should, it should pretty much coincide and make it more clear.
I, I think it does make it clear, in my opinion. I think that we should be clear as to what they should be following, and they should be following the contract. Because the ordinance doesn't change, it's the contract that changes, correct? Right? So I think we should follow, moving forward, the contract until it is changed. I mean, until we renew and whatever else we're going to be doing, if things are going to change, it should change when we're in that process.
Well, I, I, I don't... I don't know, because I think that was the purpose, because there was a mismatch. I thought that that was the purpose for this uh ordinance, to fix that problem, you know, of having things, because that was the complaint before. So, um...
Mr. Ogle uh can speak to that, but what I will say is, in renewing the contract, there are going to be some changes to the contract. Everyone should be following the contract. The ordinance, as long as it doesn't con- contradict what the ordinance says, everyone has to follow their signed contract.
The ordinance, the contracts had a language that didn't, the language didn't contradict the ordinance, just to be clear. The ordinance was signed based on the issue of, and the contracts went... Contracts are operative documents, they, they wanted to step further to provide clarification. So there was never, the idea that there was a conflict between the two is, is not accurate. You know, the con- the, the contracts, you know, the purpose of them was to set the standard that, um, you know, the towing companies had to follow. The purpose of the ordinance that was on for introduction tonight, that was voted down, was to clarify any confusion, um, and, and take the contract language essentially, and put it into, um, put it into the ordinance. Uh, so, you know, that, that failed, so if the council wants to consider that in the new year, when it renews the contracts, that's fine, but the purpose, the intent of the, um, the ordinance that was on tonight was to provide that extra clarification based on the confusion that's arisen, um, over the last couple of months.
Because I, I feel that, um, the reason why that was done, because it wasn't clear to the towers and, oh, you know, the ordinance and the contract. And I think the purpose of that was to have it on both places to... So, in the new contract, I guess, um, we cannot leave it just on the contract, or just on the, because we're gonna be playing the same... We're gonna be talking about the same thing again.
So for clarity, so that we're not talking about the same thing over and over, what are the forms of payment? As per the contract? I saw it, I just want to say it out loud, um, so that it is clear to everyone what the forms of payment are, as of right now, until the new contract is ready to go.
Cash, um, electronic payment app, credit card, and check. I believe check was in the contract, but definitely the first three were in the contract. Um, the proposed ordinance tonight had the same language. The council president, when it was introduced, um, struck check from there and just left, um, credit card, debit card, uh, cash app, and cash, and to be, uh, and the requirement was added that it was in the discretion of the vehicle owner or operator on which form of payment they prefer to use. So that, those were the changes proposed in the ordinance that was voted down tonight.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So i- if I can just clarify then, we are following the contract, which is clear that you're required to take credit card payments. We're still following that, just like was before, so that's all clear. So we're gonna continue to do the same thing.
Until the next contract.
Okay, so then, same thing, if we get the complaints that we get, we're going to do the same thing that we do and bring the same situation up to you, and it will be heard and decided on, whatever's decided on.
Well, the appeals are heard, the complaint is within discretion of the department, but the, the only way we'd get back to the council is if there's an appeal of a decision that's rendered by the police department. That's procedure in the ordinance.
Okay, alright, so again, I just wanted to, I, I'm sorry for keep reiterating, but credit card payments are required, as well as cash, check potentially, and um, electronic payments.
Not required, but option.
Uh, uh, they're required to, to take those to, those forms of payment. So if, if tomorrow, if tomorrow we got a complaint for the same thing, we're gonna investigate it and do it the same way that we did at this time, and if they do not take credit cards, we will recommend their charges and so forth as the, the ordinance allows. Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Oh, good evening, Orlando Perez, uh, Perth Amboy. Um, but the councilwoman there, over there, speaking about the towing, she did the right thing, she spoke pretty clear about it. She said something pretty, pretty good, and I'm glad you spoke this out. That's pretty good. There's, there's just a good thing here, what I just saw with this towing thing, you had a good discussion, so that's good. The second thing is, I went to the library Saturday, and they had a Spanish day, that was good. That was really good that day, this library does a lot. And, um, they, they, they're putting it on the map, you know? Um, also, I found that they're gonna do a movie down here on Smith Street, that area. Um, it sounded a little crazy, maybe they could zip the movie camera to the library or go in there, you know? Hey, let's put this library on the map. Put it on the map, seriously, it could be done. Because it's going a long ways, it's been improving, more and more and more, you know, money and stuff, but, uh, there was a movie like that, it was called Ragtime, it was about a library being held hostage, good movie, watch it, Ragtime. And the movie's fantastic, how they took a library, that's, we're gonna kidnap the library, and what they did to protect the, not protect, but, uh, there was a cost for it. And it was one of the best movies I saw, they used the library as a hostage, nothing, it's just what the way it was. Um, not just about it, but what I see here, yeah, it's, it's getting pretty good here, little by little. Because before, seriously, it was, nobody was talking, nobody said nothing. And like I said, you have a responsibility here, you were elected, you should be proud sitting in that seat. And the, the more you go forward openly, don't be afraid, be open, talk about it, the more people will look at you. Don't be afraid, I've been to a lot of things, and I tell it like it is, I do, I'm not ashamed. I speak my ground, you think I was bad here before? You should have met John Seibert many years ago, stories about him. So, um, yeah, keep, keep it going this way, and you'll be how far you're gonna go. You're gonna go a long way if you keep doing it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Council, my name is Christina, I'm Representative Carla de Zaccato, body, two two three Grant Street. Um, back to the matter of the forms of payment. Um, uh, first, uh, I believe it was already discussed in, by the council in a past meeting to change that verbiage on, about the payments to, instead of ands, to ors. So it was under our discretion, under what forms of payment to accept. Um, you know, it's hard enough sometimes, we have cars that are abandoned, a, a lot of times, it's hard to track people down in the matter of the checks. Um, we accept all kinds of payments, so cash payments, all digital payments. Um, you know, checks are hard enough, we have people that run a credit card that will call the credit card, you know, they'll call the company, cancel the payment. We get stuck with the payments. So adding checks into there and forcing us to take checks is also, um, you know, it's, it's harder for us to collect payment. Um, but, and especially these days with all the forms of the digital payments and everything, I don't think it's necessary. I don't remember the last time somebody came in and actually requested to pay by check. And again, back to the, uh, what I was saying before, um, in a previous meeting, it was discussed and voted upon, I believe, that it was under our discretion, under what type of payment to accept. And as far as the contracts also, do we have any, is there any discussion onto like what kind of support we can get in that contract from the city? Um, a lot of times, you know, we're getting attacked for things, um, people don't understand that it's a police tow, they're... that it's a police tow, they're thinking we're towing it ourselves, so when those contracts are done, is there any kind of support that we're given, or any kind of input that we're giving on the contracts as well?
I feel that, um, there was a meeting
Yes, there was.
Recently, and I think, uh, Mr. Akil is planning to have some other
Yes, because I don't believe there was a lot of things that were resolved in that meeting, I know a lot of things were discussed, the body cams as well, um, I know that was brought up, who would, who would be, you know, is that up to us? Do we have to provide funding for that body cams and for the, um, servers to save that on, like, we, you know, there was concerns about, uh, all those issues as well, so when do we get resolve on all of that?
Let me speak, so, we, we, in, in that meeting, uh, we discussed those things, um, in terms of like, the police are going to do that anyway, in terms of the body cam, what was recommended was like, your driver can record it as well, uh, with their phone, um, if they choose to, just, it was just a, a, a preventative measure to protect you, and then whoever the driver is, and then email it, download it at work, I mean, at the job, so they don't have to keep it on their own phone in terms of saving it or taking up space on their personal phones, and then they can just delete it once you have it at your job. But there's a number of things, the process is still, uh, it's an iterative process, uh, I sent out an email, I made a couple of amendments, I'm going to make some more changes as well, but you can see there's some of the, the input that was from the records in that, uh, from that meeting that was added to the process.
Yes.
So there's going to be some more changes as well before the end of the year, before the contract.
Wonderful, and then back to that payment, I, I know my time's up, but I know, back to that payment issue, so is it going to be under our discretion as to what forms of payment we can accept?
No, that's not with the contract, you have to go by the contract.
I understand that, but we said, we, you, you did say that we would be changing the contracts yearly, the contracts are due in a week.
The checks part, the, the checks part will be taken out, that's unacceptable, like, you don't have to take checks, but all electronic forms, credit card, debit cards have to be accepted. That's what's in the contract, that's not going to change.
Okay.
For clarity though, I think she's referring to the and/or, because meetings ago, we did discuss the adding the and/or credit card payment.
Previously, it was already voted on as or.
As or, correct, so it would be up
The way, it's just, whether it's and/or, and, and/or, and/or, it's whatever the vehicle owner or operator wants, that's the, that's the way I'd phrase it.
But as far as like, support for us, like, like, again, you know, we have vehicles that are abandoned, we used to get support for like, the junk titles, um, I think that has, I don't know who's, uh, you know, who's supposed to be responsible for that now, um, so there's a lot of things that, kind of like, we need support for, so what are we going to further do to get that support?
Okay, so I think, Mr. Akil, if you're planning other meetings, I think those issues should be spoken with the, with the tow companies.
So, no problem, but like I said, it, it's, it's an iterative process, those things will be worked out by the end of the year. Everything will work itself out with this new process, the direction that we're going in, what's expected of all wreckers, how you conduct business, and how we as the city expect for all wreckers to conduct business, if you're going to conduct business under the umbrella of the city.
Right, and then also vice versa, we, we kind of need the support from you guys, you know, because there's been multiple situations that I know I personally have been in, that it's, it's, you know, it gets a little sticky sometimes, and, you know, the, the support back from the city is well needed for us as well.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Okay, council comments? Councilwoman Morales?
Uh, nothing really much to say today, just thank you for everyone who came up here and voiced out your concerns, we're always here to listen, I truly appreciate that, and, um, just pretty much enjoy this weather that we are having, as, you know, for as long as, for as long as it will last, because I hear it's going to start getting chilly again, um, and have a nice, long holiday weekend that's coming up, enjoy your weekend, have a safe one, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Peralta?
So a few things tonight, um, so I just want to piggyback off of what was said, um, the library does do a lot, in my opinion, this library does the most, um, from any surrounding town, so kudos to them for involving, um, you know,
The community.
The community in everything that they do, I feel like they have something every other week, so, kudos to them, and we should support them, um, and by us, I mean the community members, um, and whatever it is that they are doing, um, and then I also have to be patient, you know, sometimes we stay here and we get attacked, and trust me, we do hear your concerns, and a lot of good is being done in Perth Amboy, but everything occurs at the right time, like my friend likes to say over there, it is a plan, and, um, you know, we try to get things done as quick as we can, so we do hear the concerns, so please be patient. And then lastly, a comment was made on, um, how do we become a business-friendly community? I think that's a, depending on how you see it, I think that we are a business-friendly community, um, we all live in this town, we all try to contribute to the town however which way we can, um, but the conversations that we've been having about the tow companies and all that stuff, um, have been really good conversations, in my opinion, I know there were mandatory meeting, it was a mandatory meeting, um, they should continue to be mandatory meetings, because if you're not here, how can we fix these issues, you know? We don't see your side because we're not there, at least I'm not there, so, and I don't know the tow truck company business, so by you participating in these meetings, by you coming to the city council meeting, we can hear your concerns and we can't address them unless we don't see that side, so you brought something to my attention that I had never thought of before, you know, so now that's something new that we can think about, when we are making these new contracts, because we do want the businesses of Perth Amboy to be successful, and we do want to help that, help you help that happen, um, but in order for that to happen, we need to continue to have these respectful conversations, um, so thank you for those of you, there's not many of you out there, but thank you for the few that did come, um, and I hope that you fell your, tell your fellow colleagues to continue to come to these meetings, um, because it's important, the communication, so that we can fix things on our end and vice versa, um, because at the end of the day, we're all here to serve the same community, um, so let us help you. Um, and that's pretty much it, have a good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio?
Um, I was gathering my thoughts for a minute. I really wasn't going to say anything, but, you know what, we, we get elected, we sit up here, we listen, and, you know, sometimes people don't like the decisions that we make, but I can honestly say that, like, when I make a decision, and I'm speaking for myself, it's not personal. You know, when you make it personal, you lose your, you lose your, your vision, and, you know, I have a clear definition in my mind what's right and wrong, and I practiced that for the forty years that I was a police officer, and, you know what, and, and my thing is, is that, but you also have to follow the rules, and, you know, we're up here and basically, that's what we're trying to do, and sometimes it's hard, and we have these very deep discussions about certain things that affect the community, so if, nobody up here takes anything lightly, you know, and, and, and whether it's us, or the B.A., or the, or the city attorney, you know, we take this all in, and we make a decision, and sometimes people are not going to like that, sometimes it's going to go one way, and maybe the next time it's going to go another way. So, all I'm saying is, let's go in the right direction, and really, thanks for being here, other than that, and you know what, uh, sometimes it's very hard to be up here, and today was one of them days.
Thank you very much, and for me, I just want to say thank you for everyone who participated tonight, we had very good conversations, um, I know that, um, just like our, Mr. Puccio said, uh, every one of us here makes our own decision, we also look at things in a different way, um, and my decision is always going to be from here to the residents and the visitors of this city. I am working, um, for the business, it's not only the residents, but I'm also looking out for both side of the coin, so to make this ta, this city the way I envision it, I, I just have to have, um, a balance from one side to the other, and just because sometimes I go against what other people say, that has nothing to do with you personally, it has to do the way I look and the way I want things to work, so, um, I hope that you don't take that personally of whatever, how I vote here, but because I was elected to do the right thing, and that's the way I see it, and I will always be on the side that I feel that is the right thing for, for our community. I thank you for having the business in our community and to help out, so, um, and thank you for coming in tonight.
Sorry, I have one more thing, I didn't want to interrupt, but one more thing before you conclude.
Okay.
I know it's also Fire Prevention Week, um, month, and so kudos to the fire department, I know they've been working very hard with different events and activities to promote fi- uh, fire prevention, I know they've been stopping at different schools, so thank you for that, kudos to you, I know the children enjoy it, I know the children in my school enjoy it, um, so thank you for that.
Okay, and with that, we say goodnight, I need a motion to close our meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Thank you, everyone.